Podium, tell us who you are. Sign in, I think your name, and you have three minutes. We have a 12-minute per subject matter limit. So if there's someone here that would like to talk to us, now would be the time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Monty Porter. My wife, Lyndon, and I are longtime residents of the Shawnee area. We own three homes in Shawnee. Our current residence is at 2300 Crooked Oak Court. And the reason I'm here is typically, we're like most households, we pay our bills on time. And I believe it was in September, we didn't pay our water bill. It was getting near the time it was due, and I paid it through my bank as I typically do. So that would've been on a Sunday, and it was due on a Monday. And on a Tuesday, I came home, and I had a cutoff notice in my mail. And I was shocked at that. Our bill was due that Monday. By Tuesday, I guess it was Tuesday or Wednesday, I'd already received that cutoff notice. And attached to that cutoff notice was a $5 fine on top of that. Now, my wife and I, we can afford that, and I should've paid my bill on time. And I added in, I believe it was a 10% charge on top of that water bill. So if my water bill was $70, I'd've paid 77. And I was more than happy to pay for that. However, in my mind, and so this is not about me, I can pay that $5. I could pay that $5 over and over again. But 21%, 1 in 5 of our fellow citizens live in poverty. That's not a possibility for them. I think it's piling on. And I talked to a few people about the reason for this, and I understand it's because bills aren't being paid on time, the city needs operating cash, and I get that. I run million-dollar budgets myself, so I understand that principle. But when we pile $5 on the people who can't afford it, that's a problem. I think it's an ethical issue within our town for that to be occurring. And there's gotta be a better solution. For a person to receive a cutoff notice within a day or two of their bill being late, that's a problem. Now, I was also told that the bill has to be over $80. Well, I own a home in town where we've had the water cut off at the street now. Personally, I've cut it off because we've been replacing lines. But I kept my utilities up. I pay, on average, $70 a month at that residence. That means just for no water usage at all, I have to pay $70. So reaching the $80 limit on your bill is not that difficult to do. If you have a utility in this town that's very little water usage, it's gonna put you there. So it's not as if people who are abusing the use of water in this town are the ones paying that $5 extra charge if, for some reason, they can't get their bill paid within two days it's past due. Plus, they pay 10% on top of that. I think the 10% is justified. I agree with that. But to cut somebody's water bill off and charge $5 on top of that is abuse. I think it's piling on to people who are already struggling to make ends meet. And I would like to see the city do something else about that. Would you mind if I'm entered into one more subject, entering on the same topic? Do I have time?
You've got about 30 seconds, Monty.
You're fine. This is second-hand knowledge. Thanks, Joe. This is second-hand knowledge, but I also heard that somebody from the city called up one of our local churches who feeds people in the community, and asked them to please stop because that was encouraging homelessness in this community. That's a problem, folks. That is a moral and ethical issue. We need to take care of those who are around us. And if we're stooping to the point that we go to churches and ask them not to answer the call of God, that's a problem. And we need to stop that. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Anyone else?
Randy James, 1522 North Broadway, mayor, council member. Still opposed to the bike lanes on Broadway, the Blue Zone project. The last meeting, I didn't stand up, I wanted to, but there was people that, after the meeting, said that nobody opposed the bike lanes, so here I'm opposing them again. Just have questions, I know that can't be answered tonight, but we've been told by social media people that this bike zone is a done deal. It's all in the works, just waiting on, I guess, people to paint the street. I don't know. Just wondering if somebody could acknowledge that or whatever. I don't feel like I'm wasting my time, but this is gonna be a hardship on more than just a handful of people. I got 20 signatures and that have signed a petition that I'm supposed, gonna bring one night, gonna get more, that are opposed to it. But there are also some that wanna sign it, but they don't feel comfortable about it. So that's just up to them. I just don't know. I mean, where can we get this meeting? Because I think, was it a month ago now? We come up and people said this isn't gonna happen until after the first year. Is that after the first year when it's gonna implement into place? Because on social media, I know it's just social media, but a bike store, bike, I don't know which one it is, in town said this is already set up and done. I mean, if so, you know, the street sweeper, you know, can't go over this, bike, paint, because it's steel brushes. But if you get plastic brushes, you know, what's that gonna cost? And then when the paint deteriorates, this pad or whatever, who's gonna pay for that? The Blue Zone again, or is it gonna be the city of Shawnee? I mean, we just have a lot of questions. And if we can get some answers, you know, not today, or maybe set up some, I don't know, meeting or something like that, I just don't know. I mean, but if you drive up and down Broadway, if you count the signs opposed to it versus the ones, the little green signs for the bike lane, you know, it's outnumbered. But I know you just can't go by signs. Thank you.
Okay. Don't believe everything you read on social media. Anyone else? Randy, did you sign in? Sorry, I forgot.
I did too. I signed over here last time.
My name is Gene Greenfield. I live on 1900th Block and North Broadway. And I too want to raise some questions about the bike lane, the proposed bike lane. I think it'll be a hardship for a great amount of people, and I think it'll be something good for a very small handful of people. I think the bad far outweighs the good. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had a long tradition of Halloween on Broadway Street. There are so many cars and kids and having a good time, you can't even get up and down the street. If there's no parking allowed, excuse me, that'll go away, along with service trucks, delivery trucks, people that have to park there because they don't have room. The parking, if you take away a parking, it's a huge, huge issue, and it needs to be really thought through thoroughly before making any decision. I'm not opposed to bicyclists. I'm just trying to preserve our rights on Broadway Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle James, 1522 North Broadway. They came up, so I'm going to, too, I wasn't planning on it. I think my biggest question is why? And if we can get that answered, that would help. With the holidays coming up, I have no parking for my family to come visit me. If you guys take that away, the home that we purchased will not be a place for us to have Thanksgiving and Christmas and birthday parties for my grandkids because they can't park. I have one parking, and I had somebody ask me, "Well, why don't you expand your parking?" I don't have a room. I have a street parking, that's it. And so I'm just trying to figure out why Broadway would be the only street that they're trying to do this on, when there's 22, I counted them, other streets that go through that actually have grocery stores, schools, you know, places for people to ride bikes to get to, where Broadway does not. So that's just my two cents on this.
Anyone else? Just for information purposes. Come ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sam Nowakowski. I am soon to be living on 15807 Sleepy Hollow Road on Shawnee Lake. There's an item on the agenda today about an easement for Canadian Valley to run power to my house, where our house is literally done, except for we have no power to our house. So I strongly approve--
Encourage.
--encourage approval of our easement. My wife and I, anyway, she would like to have a house, so anyway, I appreciate it. I've been living with my dad for like a year, so please approve the easement. Thank you very much.
You haven't been there a year without electricity, have you?
No, I just, we sold our house in January. I've been living with my dad since January where our house is being built, so we're super excited to move in. Everything looks great, except it's dark.
Thank you. Just, I feel like some clarification is in order in terms of status of where the Broadway project is. There have been meetings for over two years. They've been well-publicized. I was at several of those meetings, not all of them. There was no opposition at those meetings. So the opposition that's coming up is late in the game. Nothing is official until this group says it's official. And this group hasn't said it's official. So I would encourage you to not panic. And as far as the Commissioners that I've talked to, we're searching for areas for compromise. So y'all don't get the feeling that we're gonna hang y'all out to dry without some discussion. You may lose that debate ultimately, but you won't lose that debate without what I feel like would be sound reasoning on our part and substantial discussion. So it's not near time to put the panic button. But I'd be less than honest if I didn't tell you that this project is well along in the discussion phase. That doesn't mean it's too late, but that's where we are, just so that y'all will know. Anyone else have any comments that they'd like to make on that? Thank you very much. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item three, animal control, pet of the week.
I'm Officer Couch, animal welfare. This here is Badger. He is our pet of the week. He is a 10-month-old pit bull, male. Badger here was an owner surrender. Came to us about a week ago. He is a little skeetish, but once he warms up, he'd make anyone a good dog. It'd cost him $140 to adopt him.
Thank you very much. He looks kinda like a Badger. Item four, consideration of resolution for the selection of City of Shawnee Bridge Inspectors for the Oklahoma Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program. Michael.
Commissioners, before you is an ordinance to select our bridge inspectors for a two-year contract. This is an ODOT program, and they give us a couple of options that we have on selecting the engineer for the services. One of those is for us to interview three firms of their selecting, from their list, and go through that process and choose one. One would be to do nothing and allow ODOT to select our engineer for us, and the third option of which we have chosen is to select the one that Potawatomi County has also selected, and so that we all have the same engineering firm. That's what we've selected to do, and that is CED4. Is there the name of that group? Or Circuit Engineering District Number Four is their full name. So if this is passed, they'll become our bridge inspectors for the next two years. Also in front of you, just a little bit of added information, I've included a map of our local bridges that they would be inspecting. If you don't want to count all the dots, there are 37 of them, so you have an idea of where they are. I know most people don't realize how many bridges we actually have in the city limits, so I wanted to give you all that information. And I've included a sample of one of the bridges that we have recently done some work on that was on our critical list. And our street department actually did the work, and once it was reevaluated, it went from a three-ton bridge to a 32-ton bridge. So it has been reevaluated and bumped up and got off the critical list. So that's the report you see in front of you.
Thank you, Michael.
How often do the bridge inspectors, is that every year?
So it's every two years. So they'll do one round of it. Now, the critical bridges are every six months. So we currently only have one bridge now on that critical list, and they'll look at it every six months, and that's the bridge on Main Street.
Any other questions of Michael?
Apparently, they're going after the bridges statewide in a big way.
Yes.
Down to the nitty-gritty and thorough inspection, I guess it's about time we did that.
Yeah, this is fully paid with ODOT funds. We don't pay a dime for it. They inspect all our bridges through their program.
Their motion for the resolution.
I'll move it.
Second.
By Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Read the title, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance concerning Bridge Inspection Responsibility by Local Government for Compliance with National Bridge Inspection Standards.
Thank you very much. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item five, consideration of a budget amendment for Community Development Block Grant, Fund 190, providing budget for the CDBG Consolidation Plan 2020 through 2024.
Yes, so as the budget amendment states, this is to cover the cost of the consolidated plan that was approved by the, the contract that was approved by the commission at the October 21st meeting. So this is just, we're gonna follow a budget amendment. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions of Ashley? Would entertain a motion to approve budget amendment. Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Seehorn. A further discussion. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Consider bids, purchase and installation of vinyl tile, carpet, ceramic tiles for Shawnee Library.
James, just wanted to make some comments.
Okay. All right, let's move to item B, senior, well, he's there too. Ashley, you wanna do the budget report while we're waiting?
So, good news again this month. Sales tax is up 4.71% for the year, 8.64% for the month. Use tax is also up. We are looking at 58.84% above projections for the year, and 35.15% for the month. So that's a positive sign. We've come in over budget for several months in a row, which is very encouraging. Also, budget-wise, we're trending along perfectly fine. We're with 66% remaining budget in the general fund and 69% in SMA, which is our two largest funds. There haven't really been anything that has been so unexpected it would blow our budget, so we're all good in there. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions of Ashley?
The use tax is still very strong.
Yes.
Do you have any idea why?
It's online purchases.
It's got something to do with your wife, I think.
Keeps off.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you. James, we skipped you, you're up.
So, Mr. City Attorney, why would it take to change our bid procedure where the staff could open the bids like at 4 o'clock or something like that? Is that possible?
Just in publication.
Always put it in the publication, so they'll open it.
Let me just, what's advertised, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. What will we do in first, Jim?
We'll do the vinyl tile, carpet, and ceramic tile for the library.
All right, so this is replacing the carpet in the library with vinyl tile. It'll be the complete library this time. The last time we did that, we only did the public area, and the carpet in the staff area is still the same carpet that was put in there in 1989 when it opened, so we're gonna be replacing that also. And then doing some stuff to the restrooms. On that, we had two bids come in. Brian's Flooring at Oklahoma City for $92,600, and Affinity Corp. of Tecumseh for $168,730 with an add-on of $1.75 a square foot in the event that the moisture test came back, that they had to do something else. Now, the addendum that I had put out on this, you know, stated to make sure that the bid you turned in was to cover anything that might be, so we'll have to just check this out and make sure that the figures here reflect what they need to do there. You know, in the event, you know, the moisture test comes back, they need to do some alternate glue in order to stick that stuff to the floor. So it's gonna be staff's recommendation to defer this to the next commission meeting in order to go over these bids. Is there a motion to defer? Moved by Commissioner Gillum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harrod. Call a question. Any questions of James while we got him up here? You had a question. I ain't read--
I just said that was a lot of difference between the two.
Yeah, there is.
One was probably just a complimentary bid, so we'd have two bids, I think.
I don't know. They were both there at the bid meeting, so--
He decided he didn't wanna do it, probably.
Yeah, probably so. Item B, senior citizen roofing center. All right, so, you know, as far as I know, the senior center roof hasn't had a new roof on it since 1985. I don't know how long that the pool room roof has been since it was redone. And we do have some leaks in there. We've had some leaks for Quadahall, and now that we have some funding to repair these roofs, that's what we wanna do. So we had a pre-bid meeting, and it wasn't a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and we had a few show up to take a look at it, but we had four bids returned. Alva Roofing Company in Oklahoma City for $103,425. All Line Roofing and Construction Incorporated out of Tulsa for $146,124. Cantrell Exterior Finishes out of Choctaw for $89,000. And Ground Zero Roofing out of Newcastle for $63,500. And it's gonna be staff's recommendation that we defer this to the next commission meeting for us to go over these bids. Any questions of James while he's here?
If they have to replace insulation, is there any kind of a price in there of insulation?
I had, I told them all to add in a per-square-foot cost, if there was any insulation that was saturated, after pulling some of that stuff off that needed to be replaced. Of course, not them putting any in the bid. So we're gonna have to talk about that. And also, there's two skylights on this project that's gonna have to be raised because they're really too low. They've been too low for years. Just a miracle, I guess, they had a leak.
Well, I was in the specifications though, saw that. I move we defer.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, their second. Taken by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business? Commissioner, comment.
Friday, we had a Christmas tree lighting, believe it or not. I just can't get my brain wrapped around that yet. Friday down there in Celebration Life Park, and that was a really, really nice event. That has turned into a big event, and our fire chief honored us with his presence there. He told me that he approved of it. Nice event. Thank you, city staff, for all your help in getting that put together. Another thing I wanna relay is that that night, I met a young lady there that is a senior at OBU. And this girl's from Houston, Texas, and she graduates this year. And she let me know that she likes it so much here in Shawnee that she's gonna stay here rather than go back to Houston. So her goal right now, when she graduates in the spring, is to, is get a teaching job here in Shawnee. And I was just very glad to hear that. We always worry about our young people leaving us, and here we have one that's come all the way up from Houston, from a big city that has a lot to offer, and she's chosen to make her life here in Shawnee. So I thought that's pretty cool.
Here, here.
That's all I've got.
I'm just so happy with the weather we're having. I can't think of much else right now, so we're good. Thank you. So when's the Christmas parade?
December 5th, Thursday, December 5th. If we had today's weather, that'd be nice.
Oh, yeah, it'd be great. It's usually freezing rain or something else when we have that thing. That's all I have.
Shopping season coming up. Just wanna remind everybody to shop local, buy here, stay here in Shawnee. And in the rare exception, you can't find it at a local brick-and-mortar business, rather than to go outside of town if you have to order it online. At least we collect sales tax from it now. So I think that's gonna be my, my first choice, of course, is buy it here. But rather than go somewhere else, I'm gonna go out and eat in Shawnee and order it online.
I agree with the Commissioner about buying Shawnee, shopping Shawnee, so we need to do that.
Great. Thank you all. We are, my comment, Monty, if you would hang around for two minutes after the meeting and you and I could chat for just a second, I would appreciate it. Otherwise, we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. And would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Consider bids, 2110 West Independence Street, Shawnee, Oklahoma, Track 23.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I have to report that we did receive one bid on this particular piece of property, but that the bidder requested that his bid be withdrawn, like this afternoon. So we don't have anything to present tonight. And so the plan would be then to revisit the issue and republish the opportunity and see if we can get more interest in it.
So we reflect no action on item two. Thank you very much.
Seems that way. Thank you so much.
Is there any new business? We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority and would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Consider approval of emergency wastewater repairs, estimated amount of $60,000.
So that's still leaking today. Is that line encased in another line? Is there conduit through there?
There is with this repair.
Oh, but there wasn't before.
The first one, the original one, was not. It was not encased.
That'd be a lot easier if it had to just replace the line.
Yes. So, if it.
We don't have any choice, do we?
No, sir, we don't.
And because it's an emergency, we don't have to put it out to bid?
Correct.
Okay. Would entertain.
Fair emergency.
Any questions of Brad?
Yeah, I mean, that's staff's opinion.
Emergency, yeah.
I move we defer.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero.
When was that original application announced?
I tried to find the information on that. Fifty?
Yeah, probably.
Mid-fifties, I believe.
Probably, you know, now it's a good requirement to have a conduit in there, but I don't think it's been a requirement before, been done before.
Not when originally instructed.
Item three, Degester Cleaning at South Side Wastewater Treatment Plant Award.
Steph would like to defer that to a future meeting.
Is there a motion to approve deferral?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.